Make sure you smell good. This is the quietest place for this for a long time.
You're asleep.
Just waiting. About twenty thirty.
Do you want to date any time? Check out in the term. Or about eleven on that Sunday. I have to let three people run keep the keys all week. So we helped them know what time they checked it out.
And those are just suggestions.
All right. The order. We'll call. Ken.
Yeah.
Doug.
Yep.
Joel.
Yes.
Sue.
Yeah.
Steve.
Yes.
Uh, approval of the agenda.
Will you approve the agenda?
A discussion. Doug.
Yes.
Joel. Sue.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Ken.
Yeah.
All right. On to presentation of the betterment. Mister Paul Ness. We are happy to have you. Want to read this to you real quick? Uh, about your nomination and then uh, we'll give you a little plaque here. Would like to nominate Paul Ness for the betterment award. He took over a family owned business and ran it for thirty-six years. He sold the business to a local person, kept the business open for the benefit of the community. After retirement, he was hired by the city of the month. Was also settled in as a public works assistant when needed in the last four years. Always willing to do other projects when assigned. Not to mention, just an all around good beginning. So, uh, congratulations, Paul. And uh, I'd like to present this plaque to you and copy of your bedroom. Little trickle, little water. Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
All right.
Old try.
Go back moments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this, Paul.
Yes, thanks, Paul.
I lead now, yeah?
Yeah.
That's where the real power is.
You're welcome.
Don't make her mad.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Paul. Take care. Citizens forum. Has been changed.
Let's roll it on that.
Yeah.
All right. Hearing nothing else from the citizens forum, closes for the citizens forum. On to departmental reports. Sheriff.
Hello, Sheriff.
Uh, fire report. We have, uh, three calls. Twenty-five people total, three in Indian Township. Uh, no injuries or accidents, no maintenance needed. They have the burn trailer here for training on May fifth. That's fantastic and nothing they need from the city at this time. The fire meeting, um, took place April fifteenth. There's no visitors. Approved promotions in the meeting. Talked about their calls.
When you look at the calls. Four calls listed. Uh, and uh, Yoder Drive is in, uh, Washington Township. Rogers Maxwell. Uh, northeast hundred twenty-six is in Washington Township. And six sixty-six seventieth is in Indian Creek. And you look at the mini fire report, the three calls in Indian Creek. So...
So they missed the Washington Township because it would only been April's report. So they go back thirty days or previous month. So the two from March, March twentieth and March thirtieth, which were, uh...
He also doesn't go from the, uh, the first to the thirtieth or thirty-first. He goes from whenever the last day that he did the report to the day that he's making the report. So it's not...
Not exactly.
No.
So these in Washington Township would be on some other report?
It should be on the fire report from... Well, it wouldn't have been captioned there either. Washington wouldn't have. Depending on when he did his report for March. If he did his report from March, from middle of April, then it would have captured this.
Okay. I'm just confused.
Uh, so they're working on setting up department of physicals. Um, Scott's giving information on that. Uh, fire training school upcoming at Prairie Meadows. May training, the burn trailer will be here. Those can be reports. Joel, would you mind getting some clarification on the reporting numbers for April, March upcoming? Make sure that you're accurate in the cap, uh, which captures which in our report, please. Of EMS, um, calls from April first to April thirtieth. Eight total page outs, seven were responded to, one to four average GMS, one to two fire person assists. One was in the city of Maxwell, three in Indian Township, three in Washington. Uh, ten was in attendance for the monthly training, uh, meeting. CQI was completed by Story County Medical, no vehicle maintenance needed. And they need approval for jade holes.
I didn't get it on the agenda, I'm sorry. She filled out an application and, uh, she's wanting to get on, so...
Can we get the application?
We got the application. She has her, she has a copy and I have a copy. You want a copy?
Well, we got somebody's copy.
Okay.
If we could pull that.
Can I look at it?
Yeah. Yeah, since we have it, we can look at it.
Wait a minute.
What do you want about this?
Thank you.
That just can't go out because I think it has some work on it.
Are there EMS, do you know of any EMS courses that are around here going on?
The DMAC, um...
Just DMAC?
Just DMAC, yeah. I mean, DMAC and Mercy, but...
Right. No other?
DMAC's aren't more, no. No local classes.
Okay.
Oh, that's a chance they got here. Thanks for coming.
I came in late.
Might go on to the EMS meeting while we're still reviewing that application. Sheriff, um, several members were present. One visitor present, which is current out at, uh, Ms. Hall. Been called to order. Discussed the recent calls, talked about the tenants being sold. Uh, they made a motion to approve adjoining. Seconded. Manager.
Go ahead and go on through library.
We'll move on to library. To the last meeting, uh, several were in attendance. They had two hundred ninety-seven total books checked out, uh, seventy-nine movies. Their attendance was two hundred eighty-nine total. Um, children was a hundred and three and a hundred and fifty-six adults. They had no movie. They had fourteen in attendance for the activity. Um, track kids waiting area was sixteen. Bridges is a hundred and forty-nine total, with ninety-three on hold. Computer use was six adults and twenty-nine children. Current events, storytime involvement is growing. Friends group planning a family barbecue night in June. Purchasing items to complete building upgrades. Uh, two final early out activities in May. Still looking for board members. Um, they're trying to increase their advertisement for, uh, library board. Upcoming events are the summer reading, uh, planning, between reading program. Updating website and training, painting book return. Uh, they're gonna need a temporary book drop. A possible family movie night, looking for more events for public education entertainment and a B class in June. Um, on to the library, public, uh, public coverage in the board trustees meeting. Looks like they approved their minutes, uh, director's report. And, uh, some of their has achieved tier three status, which has been a huge undertaking for the board. And a major accomplishment, this is started several months ago. Uh, the accreditation directly involves a state aid from the library, so that's a great step forward for them. Upcoming meeting, discuss the annual summer dance. Uh, they have some grants, Rob Seaco come and talk and sharing about Daniel Grant from Dual Libraries due on June thirtieth. And they're gonna focus on renovations for the bathroom over there. And ADA compliance. They had a vote for chapter eight training and then, uh, vote for discussion of bills and budget. They had an open forum and a suggestion for a family activity was made to have a glow bingo night with presents. Reactivity for all ages and a manager. We'll move back to the EMS application.
Will we, uh, add jade holes to the EMS? Second.
Further discussion? Sue.
Yes.
Joel?
I'm going to abstain since I was at the meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Hey, Ken.
Yeah.
And we'll move on to public works. Streets, uh, we have a list of streets to be, need to cut the list down to thirty-five thousand. We'll go over that here in just a minute. Um, crews in town, boarding and conduit for fiber to come to town. Uh, still working on getting a price for the blade box or box blade for leasing a skid loader. Um, parks, new swing set is up. Need to extend peacock, uh, I think it's pea gravel in front of it.
Pea rock.
Pea rock.
Pea rock.
The peacock.
Yes. Main park restroom is getting a facelift. Restrooms are up and running, working on getting the price for fence, yard base. Uh, they want to get a concrete jersey wall instead. I don't know what that is, but sounds like it's...
Concrete barriers are like in the, in the highway where they do work.
Yep.
Barriers there. Barrier wall.
Okay. Um, floodwater will damage the fence is the reasoning behind that suggestion. Um, water pumped, one point six million. They sold one point one. Um, had a service line hit by a boarding crew, they got it repaired. Uh, they're working on getting Scott his distribution grade one next. Sewer, uh, pumped three point three million gallons. Scott passes waste water grade one, nice work, Scott.
Please.
Cemetery, working on getting it mowed and trimmed until Austin can start. Um, Austin did accept and unfortunately at the moment, he's still in school and still in law. So they're trying to work around and step in and get him some blowing time and training time.
Question on the, the service line that was hit by the boarding crew. Do we bill them for repairs?
Yes, sorry. Yes, that would be their responsibility. Since all the markings were there. Um, any other, oh, um, I think we'll include the suggestion that... See, work, second part. Well, we'll go back to parks or the public works. So we talked about and my, it's on there, I'll jump that, sorry. We'll move on to the city clerk.
Have we discussed the possibility of staying in order? Is that just an alternative?
Alternative that was proposed earlier.
You don't, you don't entertain looking at any of the bids? I have them here.
You have the bids?
It's kind of, it's not clear right now because it was a last minute thrown together. Um, he didn't realize tonight is our city council meeting, so, um, we just have some stuff here. This is literature. Um, paperwork says two thousand and twenty-two, but that is all on John Deere. Uh, it will be a two thousand and twenty-four. That's just literature about what the unit is and the specs behind it.
And this would be a replacement for the backhoe?
No, the, uh, John Deere tractor.
A little John Deere.
Well, it's not quite little, but, but smaller than a backhoe, yes, yeah.
That's the one you guys...
The one that Paul uses, right?
What's that?
The one that Paul uses?
Yes.
That's why you guys use the box scraper, okay?
Yes.
So now, that makes sense.
So...
Box tractor, box scraper.
Uh, this piece of paper right here is, um, the total is irrelevant right now because it's got both box scrapers on there. We're comparing the two. The bottom one, if we go that direction, is the route we would like to go because it's more for grading instead of just being a general box scraper. Around five hundred dollars difference, so... Um, and these two right here are the preliminary numbers for trading. Uh, this is no trade. And then this is if we trade off our tractor to go towards the lease for years to come.
Trade John Deere?
Correct. That, uh, our van wall rep did say that if we entertain the skid loader, that he'll come next month or whenever you tell him to come and, uh, answer any questions that you have. So, uh, don't pay too close attention to the numbers, Tony said, because some of them really don't make sense. We were asking him and he said it was basically, uh, a sales deal where everybody's went in to trade a car. They just show numbers wherever it works, sort of thing, so...
So I think we'll have to put this on the agenda for the next meeting. Um, would you add it to one of our working meetings? Since we don't have a...
Meeting in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. I think that probably did best. I appreciate getting the information. I'll let, look through it, look it over, um, and then we can talk about it at the next meeting.
When will the next meeting be? That way somebody can explain. Or would you like him here to explain, either of both? Okay, both would be a better way.
Uh, next meeting, I believe is next Wednesday. All right? Nope, that was my meeting, sorry. Yeah, it's fourteen, can't worry. So, we wanted that for the fourteenth. If we would, just make sure we get those back to Deb so we have a good rest game. All right. Um, on to city clerk. Kerry managed the office for three days on her own. I just want Kerry. Hope he enjoyed your little bit of time off for Siesta. Deb?
It rained the whole time.
Uh, sent a good portion of the documentation of the soccer field to the FEMA rep for the soccer field sale. To go to look at it, let me know if we can send it to FEMA for approval so that we can give it over to the school finally. Uh, I have a budget amendment, almost ready to send the paperwork. And then we have the treasures report. As well as the budget. Devin mentioned if we look at the budget report for the fire total, we are currently one sixty-two twenty-five in the hole for fire. Three oh six fifty in the hole for mayor, city council, city manager. Those are trainings that cover, over cost that. And thirty-four thousand nine forty-two fifty-six over in water. Those were the glaring issues that I saw. And with the budget amendment, we included the seventeen fifty that we were in the hole for removal of trees and that. And I think there's something else that we could...
Can we take that one district too?
Oh, yeah. Waiting on, waiting on the attorney. If you're back, I'm sorry, I was waiting.
You need to be plugged in?
Yep. And we will move on to the first there. Oh, oh, excuse me, engineer, I'm sorry. Don't worry. Last actually first.
Yeah. Amount because we are over in water is because...
Engineering costs?
West's fault.
Yep. How's the...
For the waste water treatment.
Okay.
Or the water treatment thing that we're doing.
We're setting up a separate fund for that.
These were done before we got this separate fund set up as well.
And I believe we're getting a P and D loan application for that to use the SRA funds for the water plant back, uh, backlash population. Yep. So that can be backfilled with reimbursable once you get that P and D even though that gets... I believe a pipe for this first month for all that, yeah, so that.
And, and you mentioned that the, uh, amount for the trees uh, is for the additional trees being removed yet this fiscal year.
We were going to include additional, but we had what we budgeted for this and what we paid was over, I believe.
Which one is, where is that in the capital improvement?
Huh?
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement. Capital project?
No, it's, uh, three oh five.
Well, it's under the treasures report, if you look in the treasures report.
Look on the treasury. For the, the budget report is what we have to make sure. My understanding is that we have to stay within the budget amounts on the budget report on the categories, not the line item, right? And so the trees show up where on the budget report?
It's not showing up on the budget report.
It has to show up someplace.
You see it, let me know.
I mean, this doesn't just total the whole budget?
It's supposed to, but I, as I was looking, I don't see it. All I've seen, and I didn't pay attention to that until I looked at the treasures report where in the, number three oh five were seventeen hundred in all.
Okay. If I remember correctly, uh, we set up a, uh, new program for trees, a new program number.
Yeah.
And so you may have to talk to our financial people and see whether or not that new program number is not getting reported in the budget report.
But I haven't put, I haven't put anything into that one yet.
So that three, uh...
The three oh five was we, we originally set up for tree removal.
Okay, and it has a program number in that fund. And so what is the program number that is being used in that fund? If you're not using the new tree one, you had to have a line item and it had to have, it had a program number as part of the line item. There it is. Now we can take this offline.
All right. So... Anyways. Do you want to go back, Sheriff? If you don't mind. All right. I'm going.
How are you guys doing? Uh, filling in for the regular guy, he's a little tied up right now, he's in the area, so...
No problem. Appreciate you sounding mine.
So, uh, we don't have a whole lot going on. I don't know what he's, both you and the last meeting, but, um, we kind of have one deputy who just started the academy. So we're down a little bit and hopefully they can hire one more here pretty soon, but other than that, I don't really have much new information for you guys. What do you guys got for me?
Anybody have anything? We made a call today, had a scam artist was pretending, pretending to be myself, asking for three one hundred dollar, uh, Apple gift cards. So that's going around. I know you guys had a scam, uh, acting, someone was acting as a deputy or lieutenant recently, so...
Is it per phone or per email or?
Email. Email. So be cautious with three emails or not.
Yeah.
Anybody else have things?
Lots of moving fast vehicles around town.
I know, and I saw, I saw the newest, uh, uh, paintwork over here, yeah. When did that one happen, you know?
Saturday last week, uh, at least a week ago.
At least.
At least a week before.
Overnight, I guess, I take it. About...
Two Sam going east of town and lots of black marks there as well.
Little, little grain car whenever it rains, apparently it's the only time it can slide the corners.
Is that, is that, one of the cars come out from the trailer court or is it?
I'm not sure where the car's from, but it, I saw it regularly the other, this weekend sliding, so...
But you guys know that that is a high priority. We are, we, we have like a running, uh, wager here, first person to get these guys doing this stuff, so it's not... Like, it annoys me about as much as it annoys you guys, especially the fact that they, they've mocked us, they've sent videos and stuff like that to the sheriff's office page, so...
Oh.
It's, yeah.
Can I get my foot shot?
Yeah. I think it's a public shame on them or something like that. Have them come here and apologize.
I think the break-in was in Pope County, but I mean, it's still somebody local. What, any word on?
For the what now?
The break-in that was, what, two weeks ago out there in, um, what's her name? Gal Run Center. Big Care Center. You didn't hear about that?
No, I, I hadn't heard about that either.
Okay. Apparently, apparently, um, there was, uh, she was alerted by her alarm system and so she drove out there and seen the vehicle, uh, and followed and went instead of going out of her driveway. and followed, and went instead of going out of her driveway, went down the ditch and up the deal to try and get away, but she does got.
Does she, does she live in Polk County?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's just in Polk County, so I just didn't know, I mean, it was local, I didn't know if you guys were working together or not, but.
Did we know what kind of vehicle it was?
Yeah, it was a pickup truck, looked like it had uh,
The plates.
Louisa, Louise, Leliza, Leliza plates on it.
Okay.
And she got a good picture of the guy too, so.
I don't recall Polk County sharing any of that information.
Okay.
So I, yeah.
Give me your card and I'll say.
Yeah, if you can get her information, she's got the plates on, let us know so we can keep an eye on it.
Yeah. There's a couple of people said they seen the vehicle, especially up and around uh, Iowa Center. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's a local person, or at least they're gonna keep trying to hit local spots, I guess I'd like to be.
Jane Underhill.
Head on that.
Jane Underhill.
Okay. Okay, so. Hello, anything else you guys think of?
Uh, I think so, um, since you're here, if you don't mind me asking, um, what's your guys' procedure process if the vehicle is illegally parked for a period of time, that been issued a citation by the city? Can I just call you guys and say, leave this vehicle out of here?
So.
What's the abandonment vehicle procedure?
So for us, it's twenty-four hours on the county, alright, um, we tag it, as long as we can make contact with it, tag it, then we give it twenty-four hours. Which I, what we can do to make contact with the registered owner of it, but in town, there are certain, every, every town's a little different, I have to be honest with you guys, I don't know your guys' uh, parking uh, ordinance is off the top of my head, like I, for example Slater's, I think they're right with twenty-four hours, but it's also one of those things where if they can identify that's been moved, like even if it's been moved afoot, then the twenty-four hour clock starts over again. So I, it's kind of like how it is here, where if you guys, if you, if you guys incited someone and then they get, they moved it since, and then.
In this case, it hasn't, it hasn't moved. Registrations, registrations are expired, um, there's new ones getting added in. So just kind of looking for what our next steps are, well, it's only an agenda for tonight as well, but
Okay.
I'm just wondering if you guys had it in the media.
Have we issued a city citation? And we issue a city citation if it hasn't been moved for seven days.
Yep.
And so the city citation we issued, it's been delivered and the time period for them to come in and address the council has passed. So now the question is, how do we hand it over to uh, to the next step? And you say, you come in and you put another posting on it?
Yeah, I mean.
Twenty-four hours?
So the thing is, yes, we can, we can go check on it and get the twenty-four hour period, if you guys want another citation delivered to them, city citation, let us know, we can make contact, deliver it to them. If it's gonna be a continuous problem, uh, then you guys probably have to end up being towed. I, I, I have to double check, cause I'm pretty sure our office, we're not towed for uh, city ordinance violations. We're obviously still towed for everything out in the county, on highways and something like that, but I can double check on that.
Yeah, that'd be good, cause I think it still falls under the abandonment vehicle mistake code. Even, even in the city, it's still an abandoned vehicle.
Yeah, it, it might, you know, so I'm not a hundred percent certain on that, I can definitely check on that.
I appreciate that.
It'd be interesting to find out whether or not you do tow, because if that's not part of our contract with the sheriff's office, we need to know that.
Yeah, and I can ask Lieutenant Ollis on that, she, she's the brain, a lot of that contract stuff, so I definitely get some clarification on that.
That'd be wonderful, um, she's got my contact, so if she can reach back out to me, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. She's got some kind of resolve with that.
Yep.
You guys, uh, got some plumbing stuff here you're talking about, or what's it, what's it displayed about?
Those are uh.
If you don't want to be charged for sewer, you can rent that, run your garden water.
Man, I swear, every council, council meeting I attend to, I've been to quite a few around there, every, every time, it's the same. It's like, I come in almost every single time, and it's like, you know, going down the same road again.
It's April.
They go away in the winter.
Alright, well I'll let you guys get back to it, uh, if you get that information, I should be.
You bet.
Should be that, I'll, I'll send you an email about it, and then I'll get back to you.
You're welcome.
Uh, come up with some kind of, maybe I'll just reply to you with whatever information I come back to with the, with the parking stuff.
Alright, works.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, be safe.
Alright, Wes.
Yes.
Hello, Wes.
Hello, glad to be here again finally, it's been a while.
Yeah.
So, uh, that Spencer Wigglen here. Backing me up, and Spencer's, as you guys may already know, some of the council owners, Spencer's been working on the Baldwin Street project. So he's the, and you're involved also in the historic county's trail project, so you have a little bit of insight on both of those projects, but so, uh, hit the high points of, of what we've got going on with you guys. Uh, Baldwin Street reconstruction, we'll start off with that one. So we had uh, met with the, the storm sewer outlet on Fifth and Baldwin, the property owner, and we were putting together some alternative costs for getting out to a different way, instead of going across the Christianson property, they go a different way. Um, I have a preliminary of those, I'll get you the, the final here, a little bit, but preliminarily, it looks like piping it all the way to the creek is running around seventy to a hundred thousand more than what the current one is, just for that piping, for the clearing, for what we have there. So that's.
So we're gonna straight west on Fifth?
Take a straight west on Fifth, it's about five hundred more feet of pipe.
If we pipe it.
If you pipe it, yeah.
Pipe, pipe versus ditch.
Pipe versus ditch, yeah, and the ditch costs a little bit more to go straight west than where it is today, cause it's, it's still ditch.
Probably kilometers required.
Yeah, and so that, you know, the open ditch west, the open ditch south, kind of same thing, it's a little bit more to ditch it to the straight west, because it's more digging, because it's, it's higher ground. But, so that's where, and I'll get you the final numbers on that, but that's ballpark preliminary, it is, it does have a little bit of cost to take that pipe clear to the, clear to the west out of the Fifth Street right away. Uh, the, 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 this status, uh, bid date is May twenty-first this month.
Yep.
Um, so that is, um, coming up here. Spencer, maybe a quick rundown on interest, have we seen plans going out? What are we, what are you going on?
Yeah, we've gotten some questions from the DOT, the DOT is letting in the project, and then I sent an email to Dale to you and Deb to you. Um, since we do have the CDBG funding on the project, uh, we are required to do a local notice as well. And so I'll be filing that in Ames Tribune, uh, which will be going out on Sunday. And it just includes, uh, and I believe that was one of the, one of the attachments that I sent, there's a notice to bidders. Um, and we'd also ask the post that took the city website.
City are packing as well.
And then, uh, the project will let, uh, May twenty-first, and then after the project lets, you know, uh, subject to good bids, we would issue the notice of hearing, uh, on, uh, May twenty-second. And that would be an agenda item for, uh, June seventh, uh, council meeting. And there we would, uh, hold a meeting to approve the plans and specifications, uh, and then close that meeting, and then, uh, have an action item to award the project. The project, again, is being administered through the DOT, uh, so the contract for the project is on DocExpress, which is their document management system. Uh, and so the city will need to have a registered user, uh, signed up for that, and then the city will sign and notify the contractor that they have awarded the project. Uh, the contractor will be required to issue insurance documents uh, and countersign the contract, and then the city will have an opportunity to actually sign the contract. It's a bit of a process, I'm here, phone call away to help get you through it. And then as far as one of the items that we talked about previously was the construction schedule for the project. So currently, the way that the bid proposal is, the late start date is July eighth, twenty twenty-four. Um, that is the date proposed by the Iowa DOT, and generally, um, that's generated as a month or so after the bid letting, uh, and that just accounts for the time to sign contracts and, um, get bonds issued. And, uh, that to me is a good date, I would like, if we could, to keep that date, I know that there was some discussion at a previous meeting of moving it to twenty twenty-five. Some concerns that I have, if we do make a change, I would need to issue an addendum to the project, making that change formally. All of the contractors would have to sign that, yes, they see that. Um, the concerns that I have of moving it are, uh, one, we do have the trail project coming through town. Uh, and so we do have Gerke, um, who's a, uh, earth moving contractor, uh, working on that project. And that project has a flood plain permit associated with it, and they likely won't start work in Maxwell um, out in the, in front of the prairie area and on the former railroad grade until July first. So they'll be here working in July, so you have a contractor with equipment already in town, I've made them aware, I've shared the notice to bidders with them, I think that we'll get reasonable bids. Um, they do water main installation, so they would be a good candidate as a prime contractor, uh, for this job due to the storm sewer and water main and earthwork and subgrade prep, and then they will likely have a PCC guy for the curb and gutter and driveways, an H and A guy as their subs. And they would be doing that work this year. The other benefit is, you'd have one construction season, and you'd get some major benefits done in town, you'd have the trail, and then you'd also have Baldwin Street completed this year, you wouldn't have additional disturbances next year. There's a discussion about impact to the school, um, and likely if we did push it till next year, even if it's a late start date in June, the contractor could elect to start in April, and then we're just trading off impacting school in the fall versus impacting the school in the springtime. Um, there's also discussion on harvest, um, impacting the harvest route to the grain elevator. And likely what will happen is you'll just see traffic, um, bypass that on the gravel road system and go around the project site, uh, the shortest pathway, so we might want to think about some dust control. Um, the county did, um, ask for that. If we detour on county roads or on gravel roads, uh, the detour is set up over on sixty-five and thirty, so it's a really big detour. And local traffic is gonna figure out where they're gonna be going. Yeah, so, so we'll see traffic on the gravel road system, um, the gravel road that bypasses on the north and, and to the south, um, really only has houses for the first couple thousand feet either side. Um, so doing some dust control, um, shouldn't be terribly expensive. And it would basically be on a complaint basis, as those residents make complaints, the city may want to elect to do that. Right, so it's not part of the contract, the county didn't require it, but it might be a good neighborhood thing that might come up in construction, just letting you know that. And that would, that would happen regardless of twenty twenty-four construction, twenty twenty-five construction. May impact gas prices, that's an unknown. If you're bidding a project in twenty twenty-four that you're gonna be building in twenty twenty-five, and you're unsure about gas prices, we have seen contractors, um, hedge their bets if they're asked to bid something that far out, and they artificially inflate the price in order to compensate for gas prices. So my recommendation would be to keep it, um, with construction in twenty twenty-four. And I wanted to get concurrence on that before issuing the notice to proceed in the Ames Tribune, because we do state the contract dates. Um, and then, in case I needed to issue it, an addendum to Iowa DOT, so. Kind of opened that up to you guys, are you guys okay proceeding as it's currently proposed, or would you like to discuss anything, or should I make any changes?
What would completion date be if you start July eighth?
Yeah, so it's a working day contract, it's, uh, seventy-five working days, and it would put it into, uh, likely what you're gonna see is you're gonna see finish of paving in the fall of twenty twenty-four, and then you'll see site restoration in the spring of twenty twenty-five.
So you're gonna hit the harvest season then?
We will.
And then school starting?
And school, and I think, and one thing, when we were talking, it sounds like the, the seventy-five days is, uh, fifteen weeks, so, um, you're about, seventy-five working days, so you're about four months either way, so you're probably gonna catch a, 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 a section of the, you like, like you said, the spring or the fall. Um, you know, we, we, we've talked about late start in July, um, to avoid the spring school, you're starting late start in June, you're still getting into August, and so you're still, it might be just the duration a little bit. We also don't know, I mean, that's seventy-five days, a lot of times they beat that, we don't know for sure, but, um, I think we might be swapping one for the other, and so when Spencer and I were talking, the potential unknown on the cough side to shift it out another year.
I understand that.
Concerns us and probably you too, I would think, so, um, and just, we need to get it done too, um, but, so that was kind of where we, it, it's not ideal, or maybe it's not ideal, it's maybe, it's still gonna have some, um.
Construction is uncomfortable.
Right, yeah, you gotta break eggs and make an omelet, it, it, it's gonna be messy, it's gonna be inconvenienced for a lot of things. I, it's kind of six one half of the other on some of the inconveniences. Harvest would be the biggest one that would be avoided to go with the spring, earlier in the spring. Um, but I don't know, on the, on the DOTs, when they do those late start dates, they don't force the contractor to start early. They give them a date when they can start.
If you start charging days after the late start date, that's when you start, and if they don't get done in time, they get penalized. Um, it's usually a thousand dollars a day depending on the scope of the project. So, if, even if you set the late start date in June twenty twenty-five, they have to start by that day, they can't stay, start before that day. They could start July this year, you know.
Well, failing having it, uh, meet our ideal, we asked that you take a look at the staging and North Street be done first, because there's gonna be a lot of local traffic, uh, that will want to turn at North Street, and the school buses would want to turn at North Street in order to pick up, uh, at the trailer court. And did you accomplish that?
So the staging, um, see if I can bring it up here, and Spencer you might know, so we do have stagings, are we, it's closed to through traffic. Are we, are we maintaining single way traffic for local traffic? Um, I'm trying to remember what we had.
What I'll say that we do have is we do have a temporary rock item in the contract to really, what that's intended for is more for driveways, maintain access to people's driveways as best you can. Um, and I do remember that the project was staged, I, I went back and forth on that thing, I tried to stage it where we maintain one lane of access at all times. I tried to get, maintain two lanes of access, uh, because it is a very wide street. And I can't remember exactly where, I know that we're closing it down, but I do believe that it was staged um, from north to south such that we did look at North Street as a slip lane. I know we looked at that very hard at one point in time, we weren't totally sure if you guys would be okay with the extra traffic on the parallel street. Because we recognize that some of those streets were chip sealed as opposed to paved. So you might damage, you know, might damage that one with extra truck traffic or anything like that, of people slipping through, cause if it's open to local traffic only, everybody will use it.
Yep.
E- everybody that's local, um, which can include.
Every semi that turns south in the way that.
Yeah, if it's a regular trip for them, and they know.
So the, the staging, um, uh, see staging, we are doing the east half, south of North Street. So it's closed to through traffic, you know. So it looks like we're staging the east half, south of North Street, leaving North Street intersection open. And then the second stage does North Street and the west half together.
Yep.
So other than that, that second stage, um, so we.
So North Street will be closed then for a while, while you're doing the west half?
While you do the west half, yeah.
And I think that that could be tempting, the biggest impact is the, the closure for the water main, cause you have to overexcavate for all, for all of that. Um, and then you would build that back up and, and do the work all on that side, and then, uh, you have the east lane, and then you also have north to slip through as well, and then the impact on the second stage. There, we're going to go back. I think, I think the benefit of that one is it, is we just try to keep the road open to through traffic for as long as possible. So that way, yeah, there's going to be a closure, but we tried to keep it as short of a closure as possible. And the work that would be occurring during the closure would really just be the degrading and paving as opposed to utility work. Bring that out of there.
Yeah.
So Doug, end of August, September, and October, how do you want to get up to the trailer court?
Especially if North Street's closed. We could go city streets around if North Street was open. Can North Street be done by itself and just completely focus on it for X days? Because that's the critical juncture.
End of August, September, and October.
And everything else? Easier side of this is they can detour the gravel just like anybody else that's local. You can head north out of Rock Creek side.
You're going to have kids getting on a bus about 6:40 then?
Yep. It's uncomfortable, but everybody wants this road then.
6:40 to 305th Street takes you right back to.
Kids can't be on the bus that day.
What we can do is we can, so there, the water main does cross North Street. So there's, that's the time where it's being impacted. I think what we can do is, is we can extend Stage One. Since we're keeping the north-south lanes open, we can extend Stage One to get the water main completely done. And then it's temp rock then. That's open back up. They would go down and then they would do the storm sewer. And then that would keep North Avenue open while they're doing.
That would minimize it. That would help.
And then if they were going to do any paving, you could have them do the, the paving at North first and break that out into its own stage. And then, so could you, could you throw it? That's where, that's where it bottomed down.
Because if we can get that done before school starts, August, twenty, whatever.
We could probably get it to where the early pickup times for the school bus would likely be. That's probably the best case scenario. Because that's just two weeks where you got to close something down.
It can come out there.
To get it back, stage ingrained in.
Four mile loop around.
Yeah. But it would take an, an extra vehicle to do that instead of the existing routes.
Well, I can tell you where all the local traffic is going to go. They're going to go through the cemetery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be our bigger problem. What cars stuck in the gravel.
Do you want any closures on that? Yeah, just close it down? So you don't have that? Or do you want temp rock to temp rock that route? So when people do use it, at least they're not getting stuck? Or do you not want people going to the cemetery?
And you're just talking about, really, all we'd have to really do is just close down the entrances at Main Street?
Or we'd close. Well, you want to close both, you want to close both then?
That's the only outlet to get anywhere.
Yep.
I mean, you'd only really have to, you know, close down one entrance because then the others are just making a move and coming back out where they were.
If you just close on Baldwin, then what people are going to do is go north on Main and that's cut through where there is no road. We, the South Drive and the North Drive, the Middle Drive. We already have, I suppose, put posts in there like there used to be it to prevent that.
They could probably need to be closed when you're.
It'd be hard to get that.
Yes. There's no getting back out.
Yeah, right.
We got people just driving through the ditches.
Something, yeah, you can't do so much sometimes. Can't fix it all. But we can deter the majority of them and deal with the.
Can we request, uh, can we request sort of county at certain times of the day to be able to come down and post up at 6 o'clock, 6:30?
Yeah, we tried that in other counties. A lot of times our law enforcement agents are just stretched in as it is.
And in order to do that, it would cost us more money because then we have to pay for the deputy request to bear at certain times.
Well, you know, the critical time is, uh, last half of August, uh, through the end of the project. And if we could do something that will allow the buses to get through great. And if we can't, uh, then we're going to have to let the school know as soon as possible.
That's, uh, that North parking there might be a good place to use stage pipe and.
So I think the main question right now is everybody on council on board with starting this project basically as soon as possible, which would be July 8. Which requires a public hearing on June 5th meeting, uh, which is our next Monday or next Wednesday meeting in June, our first Wednesday of the month.
June 5th.
So we turned that into a council meeting slash public hearing.
The only outstanding concern I still have is I have penciled out where all the money comes from for this project. But we don't have anything official as to where the money's coming from for the project. So how do we go from my pencil to something official?
To make sure that we cover the costs. Is that grant coverage or? So we have the STBG grant to 270. We have the CDPG grant for 300. So there's 570 there.
Project costs 180? Or 1.1?
Yeah, 1.5, I think was the estimate.
Yeah. So the rest of it is local funds and?
Lost or bond.
We need to sit down bonding attorney at some point. Some of it, we looked at as a revenue loan from a bank because the amount of money that we would be, such a small project. And for bonding that we're told that be very few people interested in it. But it's a big project for us. So that's why we were looking at, uh, revenue loans from a bank. But we have to sit down with somebody to make this official as opposed to the back of my spreadsheet.
Have you worked with a bond attorney at one of the projects? Does, does your legal counsel provide that or? You know?
No, I haven't had, uh, we've used a bonding attorney when we did the sewage treatment plant. And we've appointed by resolution, somebody as a bond attorney, right Deb?
Always.
Oh, that's what, that's what I was going to say. S T O R is not a lot of projects, so.
So it's time to sit down with that before we award a bid for something that we can't finance?
It's the town.
But it's city limits.
Not in city limits.
City property is all in the cities.
It's S 27, but it's city there.
Do we need to, so it sounds like we need to reach out to all our in community attorneys and set up a meeting with them in regards to funding our project?
You know, it's always been a chicken and egg thing. How much do we need to finance? Well, we don't know how much we need to finance because all we have is the engineering estimate, which is not the bid. But, but when we get the bid, we only have 30 days. So there's a very short time period. And particularly for people like us who are totally inexperienced.
And that's where I would, I'd get with allers as soon as you can because I don't know what, uh, not being on that side of it very often. I'm not sure what resolutions or meetings they might have to be able to.
So May 21st to June 21st. We know June 21st. Worst case scenario, if the bids are astronomical and this proof that's here really isn't interested, what, what happens then?
So the, uh, by accepting the, um, yeah, by accepting the grants, um, the, the city has accepted the responsibility of coming up with the local funds. And we have to look at what this specifically says about either, uh, postponing the award. We were, we were talking about this the other day on, on another project that we have in Knoxville where the, it's like the contract was, but that could have been local funds. Anyway, for the DOT, typically, my understanding is that if the bids come in over a certain percentage, I think it's 10% over the engineer's estimate, then, um, then the community has the right to reject all bonds or all bids and rebid the project. But if it's under that threshold, uh, pending some action, uh, generally, you're obligated to award the project. So, and that's due to the funding sources of it. And if you don't award the project, then likely the STBG funding is at jeopardy.
But if we don't do the project?
Then.
Don't do the funding. But you have some big problems in the road.
The, the challenge too, sometimes though with funding is, is if you don't do, if you don't do the project, then that section of roadway wouldn't be eligible for that funding source ever again.
Yeah.
So.
From May 21st, then, if the, what we did on May 21st, we would need to get with the attorney and find out about what he's.
Yeah, so we're looking to award at the June meeting. So if there's another, if there's another step that the bonding attorney needs before award, then we probably need a special meeting in like, like May. And I think the, the 10% is, so we've got our engineer's estimate. And so for as far as the bond attorney, using that number plus or minus, you know, plus 10% would be what the obligation is at this point. Past that, you can, you know, we can talk about it or, you know, at a time. But so we said gives you the target starting point with the bonding attorney. So what, what will be our starting point?
Yeah. Well, and, yeah, no, that was your workout plan. I was just going to say, um, for the grants, they're based on reimbursements. So you'll have to pay it upfront and then as it goes, you reimburse and they get you a check. And that usually has a lag period, but if you.
So we want 1.6 to start and then reimburse ourselves back with the grant funds.
Yeah.
Steve, did you have availability to reach out to allers tomorrow?
Let's check in soon.
Um, and then, uh, my other update on the trail is that J K Court is going to start on Monday doing clearing and grubbing. They are starting over at S 14 and working their way east. And just a reminder that the former railroad grade behind the city of Maxwell sign will be, is included in that clearing and grubbing. And I believe the pine trees right behind the sign are also going to be.
Three pine trees?
The three pine trees get cleared, they're going to get, they get replaced. They get replaced.
Oh, that was a big tree.
No.
I mean, the reason why I'm upset is my family donated the lights to light up those trees.
Yeah. The lights stay and the sign stays, which was, was on a chopping block at one point in time, so. But it was just, it's, we couldn't get up the hill without, without killing the trees. Or, and it was like two of the trees, one of them would, would have been fine with the grading limits. But we figured you didn't want two new small trees and one tall existing tree.
The original rust looking better all the time when they were coming through town.
True. Late for that road.
I have time tomorrow. Who do we deal with there?
I'm seeing, looks like Jason Kaminsky is the bonding and financing shareholder with Baylor's Law.
Get the phone number? And I'm going to need a summary of, uh, project costs and details. How much? I probably still have that from when I penciled it last year. But I also don't know if.
Yeah, we'll get to the, we'll get to the latest. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, guys. Just, um, make sure I got everything on my list here. Visit the, oh, you had asked on the sidewalk easement acquisition. Well, I have not got back with my real estate guide, but I don't know why. Not a big deal, so. Water, uh, water treatment plant project. So we had met here a while back and looked at, uh, looked at some, uh, some options. So I've got a little bit on that too. I'll get to the finals for what those cost. The, the cost came in a lot higher for the outside pump station than I was expecting. So I want to make sure that I have a good feel that we're, we're giving good numbers here. But what I'm seeing and what they're telling me is the added costs are partly due to the structure, which is a, a good enough size to be able to reduce the pump size that, that has some cost there. So it's significant cost. The other, the other added cost, the other added cost is the electrical. Where we're at in the building, the electrical is pretty easy to get to it. It's basically plug it. It's not really, but you know. Whereas if we do a, a station outside, um, we have a whole separate, um, electrical passageway out there. So we're running electrical all that way. We have a new panel, new, new shut offs, new cabinets, since there's some additional costs there for that one. And then the, the option for extending the public sewer, having a pump station that can serve the three or four houses along South Street that are in that, that watershed. That cost is quite a bit higher yet because of the depth that it has to be to serve those houses. So my guess is on that one, the cost isn't going to outweigh the, the benefit to three or four houses in that area. Even if the car, the old co-op or the old elevator were to redevelop, there's not a lot of area drained in there. So we'll, we'll get those hard numbers to you, but, um, right now, they sit at like 130 more for the, the one outside one, which was a lot more than I was expecting. And I want to make sure they're good numbers, but that's where we're at and that's what they're telling me about the price stuff. So we'll get that to you. And then let us know on that if you want us to pursue that any further. We can talk about it more. Otherwise, the, the current plan is about 95% there. We'll get you a plan there to review. We can go from there.
But that was basically to change the process so that it would be serviceable for a toilet?
For, for, serviceable for domestic waste, um, as well as to just get it outside of the building and not, uh, not use up real estate in the building to accommodate any building changes. We talked about that with some of the, um, the treatment changes, whether that needs to go somewhere, so.
And this has nothing to do with what we talked about as far as treatment goes?
No, no.
Only the waste on our backwash water?
It's only the waste of the backwash water, right, right. The only thing that would cross over there is, is getting it moved. Sorry, but it's room to expand the plant if we need to change some kind of process to deal with the wells, high magnes. And then on that topic, we've got some tests up to get you some recommendations for testing. We're working with them to look at, if we can get well three back online to, by dealing with the magnes, high magnes and well three. So we're going to get some additional testing on the raw water to see if there's something we can do there.
But we've got settled here in the week. The week we're going to take care of.
For a while. And then it comes back.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um. Um, yeah, so, um, I did get a reach out from Rock Creek Ridge Estates. Um, I don't know if they've reached out to you yet or not. Um, I got a call from a developer who was looking at the Scott Oaks property or, you know, the, the state's property. Um, he wanted some background information on what had been done there, what had been tried. So I, I, I don't think I talked, you know, um, went outside of bounds, I shared with him previous concepts of previous plots that have been provided, had a little quick meeting with him on the phone to share, um, some of what had been done. Um, I said, I encouraged him and recommended that he get with the city before he goes any further, you know, to get, like I said, I, I can't speak to ordinances as far as zoning and what would be allowed for lot size and that kind of thing. I said, that's a city decision, but, um, so I recommended he get with you if he wants to go that further on that way, but he's looking at that, that lower southwest corner. I don't know, maybe he has reached out to you, but. He's talked to me, wanted to meet with you. Okay. Just wanted a little inside information on what's already been done out there. And, uh, from there, we have a meeting next week and perfect support coming after that. Yeah. Yeah, and, and he asked, uh, that, that area has been pre-platted already. And he asked if we just went with that old pre-plat? Um, I said, well, the pre-plat is, if it's not been developed, it's, it's past its time, so you have to resubmit that. But it would make sense that if it was accepted at one point for a pre-plat, it would be in line with what was expected, so. But good, so you're getting with him, so, um, I could touch on that one, so I think that was it. The other one I've got for you is a Woodlawn Stormwater. We've got that, uh, plans that are ready to go to you, it's just in final few weeks, you see, so we'll let you look at that one and see what you think of that one. Uh, where to go from there on that one, if anywhere, um, but that will be coming to you. Any other questions for me?
Did you have numbers and I, you may have given them and I didn't write them down, but all went down to fifth and then what it's going to cost A, B, C, different directions?
Um, yeah, I, I have the preliminary ones. I, I mentioned that the, the pipe all the way out to, you're talking about the storm sewer outlet from the creek, yeah. Um, so piping it all the way to creek is probably around seventy to a hundred thousand more, um, to get it from fifth all the way up to the creek.
More, more than what?
More than what was already in the project. So that's a seventy to a hundred addition.
What about just a ditch straight west?
Just a ditch, um, I don't remember what the numbers were on that one. It's, it's not as much, but it's still a little bit more because it's more grading. The current drainage is very minimal grading because we're just using the low spots that are there going straight.
On our property completely if we do that.
It would be on our property completely. Um, it would be quite a bit more true, uh, tree clearing because you have to grade that ditch open. But it would all be, I believe it all be in the, in the fifth right away. I don't think it extends out of that, but it is a little bit more creating, so, um, I'll, I'll get the final numbers to you on that one.
Okay.
But, um, yeah. Not as much of an add, but a little bit.
When you said it, it, it raises, that, that the, the land goes up there, but I've walked it and it goes down. And, and according to the contour map on, on G I S, it shows that it goes down.
It, it goes down right off the end of fifth and then it, it, there is a little bit of a low spot there, but then as you get towards the creek, it, and I don't know if it actually raises, but the, the, the channel goes down.
I was gonna say, there, there is a, there is a, like a bank.
It, it, there's a bank and it kind of comes up and you get close to the creek, right, right.
And that, that's what I'm talking about. Everything else is kind of down.
Yeah, and then then our channel has to go down too, so we're probably eight fifty cut at the creek to open, cut it down fifth. Um, it's higher there than it is the current plan to outlet across Christians. Um, by a little bit. It's weird that the creek bank is higher than the land behind it, but. Yeah. When the creek floods, that backs up. Baldwin all the way to the north street. Which, when the creek floods with, with the current plan, or you know, with the improvements, it, it, we say it could back up, but essentially what it'll do is it'll back up and then it'll spill out into that area. Okay. So, um, with a pipe, it's harder for it to spill out into that area with an open ditch. Obviously it's going to go wherever it's going to go, step right up pretty quick.
But when the pipe. Pipe backs up, it's going to be on surface anyway and spread out.
Yeah, so it'll basically, if the pipe backs up, it'll back up just wherever the, the creek level is. And if it, um, has more water coming in off of the streets and it can get out, it'll pop out the last manhole. It's still going to add grade, but, yeah.
And we wouldn't have that same problem if you went to Christians and.
Um, it, it's still gonna, it's still gonna back up. When the creek's up, the creek's up, you know, so, so. Yeah, yeah, so whether it's in the pipe or outside the pipe, when the creek's up and that area is flooded, the water just goes to that level anyway, so.
I just wondered if it's higher or lower at one end or the other.
Yeah, when, when everything's underwater, it's all water, water seeks its own level, so.
I'm too short for it to get that way.
Don't, don't go hiking down there in a flood.
No way.
Back to the bike trail. Just looking here at the map, are they going straight up that hill to where there's like four posts up there or something, you know? They going straight up?
Yep.
What would happen if they came from the north a little bit diagonally to go up that instead of straight up? Would that save those trees?
Uh, the problem is, is the right of way from the green elevators is, so when you're cutting out and you're grading out, uh, we couldn't grade out onto their property and they've got ownership. Either, I can't remember exactly where it's at. It's either right to the toe of the, toe of the embankment or it's actually in, in, in and up on the embankment a ways. And so we had to pull the trail farther to the south and set it such that the grading limits, the need lines terminated before that right of way because we needed to get the project wet and couldn't coordinate with the green elevator to get, get a temporary construction easement or a permanent construction easement. So if we altered the trail and shifted it to avoid the trees, um, we would likely be triggering that same thing, so.
So we haven't done parks and spaces, but we have discussion action on Baldwin Street in the business. We want to cover the discussion action on Baldwin Street. Is that, is the approval or denial of starting for the bid letting for this July? Or maybe the, I have a meeting after we hear back from the bonding attorney.
So is your question whether or not to authorize the mayor to sign the notice of hearing?
Yes.
Uh, I think that, uh, we are beyond the front of putting it on hold. Uh, we need to, uh, authorize the mayor to sign it, but if we don't, and, uh, whether it sounds to me like whether we went out to bid or not, uh, at this point, uh, there may be, uh, some loss of grant funds because of the delay on the project. So you just go ahead, go to, uh, uh, hearing and get the bonding attorney, uh, involved.
All right, it's the twenty first.
Yeah. I mean, at the hearing, if shit hits the fans, it could always walk away at that time, I suppose.
Is that a motion, Steve?
I move that the mayor be authorized to, uh, sign, uh, the, uh, notice of hearing.
One second.
Further discussion. Hearing done, Sue?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Kim?
Yeah.
Joel?
Yes, Steve.
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you guys for your time and stuff like that. All right, well, that knocks out both, so we will go back to.
Have you seen the, uh, my, uh, request to get an, uh, estimate for doing paving of the, uh, connection into the trail down to, uh, uh, First Street, or, yeah.
Yep, I saw that come through. I, I haven't seen any response from them.
I haven't seen any response from them yet.
Okay. Pretty same deal. Um, they are going through, they are submitting, um, material for that project right now, so we are having good communication with them, so I'll ask them if we can kind of.
What we're talking about is the item that we discussed, uh, the last meeting, uh, paving the switchback, uh, from the trail down the hill and then straight north to, uh, First, getting, uh, a cost estimate, uh, from the contractor, uh, while they're in the area to do that, first or second? First. First. Uh, everything after that would be, uh, city, uh, responsibility because, uh, you know, we have the alley there by the cams, uh, seal coating map as a nice bike lane and then keeping second avenue, uh, uh, in good shape with all that city streets. Yeah. Okay.
Spencer, would you read this?
Uh, I'll take a copy, sure.
Good. February? So, Jason, no, I'm on the grid.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Then without.
Doesn't say anything, not really, this is, it's a test.
Thank you.
You're gonna scan it and send it to anyone.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Justin, take care, everybody. Um, the exclusive swings have been installed. Thank you, Doug, for attending that ceremony. Um, thank you, Tony and Public Works for getting that equipment installed. Twelve trees from the one lane trees, Orion Energy and Trees Forever Grant have been planted as of April twenty fourth. They're planted along the east side of the high school, middle school buildings, west side of Metcalf Street mostly. Uh, while the holes were augured, two roof tile drains were cut, two trees were blown out of their holes, they were moved to the west side of the school. Uh, one red bud tree was moved from its planned location because it would have interfered with the site for the bus, buses at stop sign. Um, spring twenty twenty four Community Forestry Grant, fifteen trees have been planted at the south end of the city park, north of and along Broad, and the species are intended to attract birds. Planning date was April, April eighteenth. Some of the stakes to anchor the trees were taken from the twenty twenty two tree planting, but with that, to help protect the trees from parking duties. Paint Iowa Beautiful Grant Project to update the paint for the church stand at the city park is waiting on weather and preparation of volunteer waiver of liability from the city attorney. And it's judged best to concentrate on the outside first to make it look best for public use. Volunteer groups have already come forward, so when weather and the waiver are ready, the project can be started. The fire department has said they will pressure wash the building ahead of us to get it cleaned up. We have a four age group that had volunteered, reached out to me this week about getting that process going, so they were coming in to do some scraping for us, so appreciate them. Uh, Arbor Day was celebrated by the tree planting and a shrub giveaway as well as a proclamation. Uh, bike trail work will be starting at the west of the trail, Cambridge about May sixth, and working its way towards Collins. Need to make sure residents, especially those adjacent to the trail, that trees are removed and, and the trail paved. Um, work will be six days a week, approximately six A to six P. Parks and Open Spaces Board will, uh, met April fifteenth at five thirty at City Hall, prepared for tree planting activities for Arbor Day. We've discussed and proposed an integrated vegetation management plan for Maxwell. Adopting such a plan will make the city eligible for additional grant possibilities. First year after the plan is available for comment, hope to have ready for votes in the June City Council meeting. Thank you, Neil.
That's good. What happened with the crab apple trees by the dog park?
Got moved.
They did get moved?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Right. We've had a concern of people, uh, driving on city park property, parking near the entrance, uh, to the dog park, getting out, like putting their dogs in. Uh, and have speculated on different ways to prevent that, whether we put a bunch of posts in, how far, whatever. I think that a simple solution would be to extend, uh, the entranceway into the dog park so that we have parallel fences on the east side, running all the way down to the south, putting the gate there at the south end. And that way people will park on the south side.
Where it's already on the right way.
They let the dogs in, and so it'd just be the cost of putting in some chain link fence.
It's a good idea. Switching it from the, moving the intake to the east side to the south side where there's, the edge of the fence is already on the, um, setback.
How much chain link do you need? I've got some at home.
Well, is there, is there room in the setback too? Because that's probably about six foot to enter, or do we just put it on the southeast corner?
We run a chain length fence parallel to the one that's there now. Uh, you know, five foot out from the existing one, running it parallel along that east side up north and then, uh, taking down the fence on the south side of that little accessway and, uh, you know, you have a gate on the south, you have a small aisle to go in and go in, so.
You're still working on the east side, I went, I went to the west side.
Yeah.
I was thinking the west side because of the park right there, they pull off the side of the road where it's already considered parking.
Yeah, the fence is a lot closer to the road over there.
That's still the other concern.
And this gives us like four parking places on the south side of the, uh, dog park because the trees aren't there anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and makes it, uh, I think, uh, resolves, solves the problem. And we can get an estimate on what it would take to put the, uh, posts in and, uh, see if we sprout some fence.
I got fence and floor.
Oh, well, there we go.
You can have whatever you need.
All right, that sounds good. Uh, you want to add that to one of our meetings? Or do we want to discuss that at the June fifth when Joey will be here?
Uh, I don't know, it, uh, might be all donated, uh,
Material?
Material and, uh, in which case, um, Scott can just go out and do it.
I'll probably have a time trade that day. Sounds, sounds like he likes good pets.
Not a pencer.
All right, uh, moving on to discussion, actually, an increase of wages for Scott Johnson. Scott completed his treatment grade one and the PACD L C certificate. Again, nice job, Scott.
Perfect frame.
That is good work out of you. With that comes, that one's a dollar, right?
Yeah. The, uh, does this take council action or do we already have a resolution that says, uh, when? People takes council.
We don't have a resolution for it. You take the council action.
Okay, I move that, uh, Scott's hourly wage be increased by a dollar, uh, due to the, uh, completion of the, uh, treatment grade one.
All right, second. Further discussion? Jordan?
Yes.
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
The motion carries. On to discussion action on nuisances. So as you heard, I kind of talked a little bit about this with the chair. Kind of the concern that I'm running into, so we have some nuisance language in our ordinance. It gives me the initial step. We provide the homes, vehicle owners notice. And binds if it's health related, but it doesn't cover what happens next. So if somebody fails to comply, what are the next steps? I ask, what I'm asking is that we either add that to our own nuisance or we have something else from our nuisance update. Which I believe you attended last week, Steve. And here it comes.
There we go. Take one at take one, pass first.
Yep, we can, and I, why waste our time on the table, ignore it first time.
I attended the Story County Economic Development Council meeting and raised the issue of where are we with the joint nuisance abatement with small communities and the county funding a portion of an inspector. They've had the position vacant for over four months and haven't filled it yet. And they don't anticipate it getting filled this fiscal year. Because apparently county processes grind slowly. So they are still interested in having their code inspector. The county is hiring a code inspector to do their own nuisance and zoning enforcement inspections. They will make a portion of that person's time available for small communities to get their nuisances and zoning handled also. But who knows when that person's going to come online? One thing that Doug had done months ago, maybe six months ago, was he attended a meeting where Colo's nuisance ordinance was handed out as a model for all communities. If you're going to have a shared nuisance enforcement officer, then they're going to have to be operating out of the same set of code. They aren't going to have, they aren't going to be able to use Maxwell's code in Maxwell, Colo's code, Colo and so on. Everybody has agreed that they would have a uniform nuisance abatement code. What I handed out was Colo's nuisance abatement code. I changed the word from Colo to Maxwell. And what Doug had suggested is that we could adopt a code like this as a separate standalone code that the enforcement officer would enforce. It would not be merged into our city code, but would be a standalone code. We need to check that out with our attorney. I mean, we have, we have some other standalone ordinances out there. So it certainly may be a possibility. I handed this out because I want everybody to read through it and see if they feel that this resolves the issues that we are facing. As far as the vehicle that is abandoned and the next step that we would follow. In the past, when we had a situation like that, we turned it over to our attorney and our attorney sent a letter saying that he's taking it to court and getting a court date. We've also, in the past, had somebody tow it and put it out at the Sui Street Plant. And that had a variety of success. I think we had it out there for, had something out there for a while. Nobody claimed it and we eventually jumped it, right? So there are things that we can do under our current code. But what we need to do is get legal advice on the next step. It may not be turning it over to the sheriff to go through another set of notices. If they've received the notice, if they've ignored the notice, if the time has expired, let the attorney tell you what the next step is.
Time.
All right. So I think moving forward.
Did you have anyone to add to this Doug?
I guess we have communicated, Deb, do you remember what city that was up in Northwest Iowa? They, they have already gone through this process and have a group of, I think it's 13 small towns in the smaller area. And the gentleman up there that is the code enforcer said he would be glad to have anybody, once we get something going down here, have that person come up and shadow him for a day or two to kind of see. He's got a system and it seems to be working very well. He doesn't try to grandstand and let's get this fixed after we do it. Do you need to have a church group come and paint your house? If that'd be a possibility, so there, he works with the communities as well as enforcing things. So he was very helpful and very supportive in us doing something similar to that.
Also, at the Story County Economic Development meeting, some of the community said that they use Safe Building to do nuisance abatement. That's a separate contract with Safe Building. They'll come out and do the inspection and all the follow through that's necessary.
They won't go inside of the open, no?
No, this is, all of this is external.
On public property.
Or private.
Oh, from?
From pub, from.
Viewing.
Viewing from public properties.
Yeah. So if we want to, I would say let's talk to Safe Building and see what they charge what their process is, if we have some nuisance. Until the county gets their act together and gets a person in, their county's also going to send out a survey to each of the cities. They did this a couple of years ago and the process was started. And the survey is going to evaluate the interest that the communities have. Some just want the inspector to come out after the city sends the first notice. Other communities like us want to have complaints filed at the city clerk's office. And then the city clerk calls the inspector to go out and take a look at it. And the inspector does an evaluation to see whether or not there is a violation. And if there is a violation, then they send up the lawyers and do all that stuff on behalf of the city. Which is, for me, a cleaner process because we're not getting one person saying it looks like junk and another person saying, no, that's my mower, that's not junk.
Which is an important piece of this, because what I see versus what Smale sees might be two different things.
And it would be very consistent if we had one person doing it as well.
They can still call into City Hall. We take down the name of the complaint, the location. We call the inspector, the inspector goes out, looked at that property, looked at other property in the area to see whether or not it is egregious or if there's multiple property out there and they haven't complained, then we probably should do everybody rather than picking on somebody. So if everybody would take a look at this and see if they feel that there are any holes in it, if this is what we want, we feel we would like to have as an ordinance, then we can start, we've taken a look at standardizing to what Colo has done. And in the interim, I guess the committee is still going to be getting together and do a survey. See what the interest is out there.
I think if you have it laid out like this, this even makes it easier, easier for if we were to use Safe Building. So for instance, if Safe Building says we'll do it on a per diem basis. So we get 10 complaints and they charge per complaint. But they have this to work off of, this is pretty consistent. I mean, I haven't read the whole thing, but a little bit, there is a finalized piece of what happens and where it goes.
I think the guy from Northwest Iowa sent me, I'll see if I can dig it up, what he uses. The standards that they have adopted, it might be what Colo already grabbed, I'm not sure. I'll pull that up too.
Sure. Anybody else have any concerns, questions on that? Should we add this back to the work group for the handbook? For next, open the 14. Keep this process rolling. Please add that to our work handbook agenda. Thank you, Neil. Discussion action on yard waste burn site. So you'll see included in here is the copy of the yard waste dump permit. I did make a little more changes. So next to vehicle made, it also has vehicle color. Next to vehicle model, it also has vehicle license plate. And then the last two lines, date of checkout and date of return, also say date and time of checkout and date and time of return. So we know when, who, what, where.
When and time.
What if I don't ever bring it back for six weeks?
Well, then you got a problem because it doesn't have a date of return.
But failure to return the key results in a $50 charge, so when am I going to charge that?
When do we say they haven't returned it?
Well, you know who it is, you go and say, hey, you owe me $50.
That's not worth Doug's time.
That's something that, as long as they let Deb know when.
That's what this, that's, that's why they're, they're writing it down when they come check it out.
Otherwise we can have 20 keys floating around town.
So the date of return is not the date it was returned, it's the date of planned return?
Expected, yes, that would be.
They are expected return? And then you would add time over to the right on both those lines?
Yep. I did have a question that was presented. Would we charge $100 for a dump truck? Is that include anybody from any other communities? So say I am a contractor out of Des Moines, I got to drop, I gotta come up here to Huxley, but my only dump site is Bitchville. And I can save myself $300 load by going to Maxwell for $100 load. Are we going to allow that guy to come in? Isn't that the purpose of charging money is to try and make a little bit of money off of it?
Not making any money at $100 load.
That's, that's bare bones cost on, on vehicle and time.
The we have somebody who lives down by Peoria who does tree service work. And so we would only accept trees from Maxwell? Or if he wants to come out and, you know, if he's cutting down a tree in the area, would that be allowed? And is that any, does that answer your question about the person from Clark?
Right, so that's, those are the questions we've got to figure out.
Has anybody done any homework to see what these other dump sites are costing?
Or the other issue. So we know and have an idea of what it costs to take it to Bitchville or take it to Newton or take it to, the three dump sites that I'm aware of. We all have a base standing for. So if anybody has any concerns, I will reach out to those three individuals and get a price before we move forward with locking this in on what we presented.
I think that's fine. There are also, I know we looked at trucks and in the side dump, it was said 100 and then 200. I think a lot of these people have a trailer that they pull, which may be half the size of the dump truck. So whatever we decide, I'm wondering, half for the trailer, full for the?
Let's get the information from the other location.
Yes, but we need probably a third category.
We'll see.
We'll see what they.
See what they do, yeah, yeah.
I was also asked by an individual who lives here in town if he will still be able to go out to the tree dump and cut up logs and take them home and burn them in his fireplace. He said he did that last year and saved $1,000 in his heating bill. So I just wanted to make sure that that was still going to be available.
I love the fact that it would be recycled.
Do we have?
But then are we going to hire ourselves a liability by having somebody running a chainsaw down there that is not a city employee on city property?
Well, do we do the same waiver of liability for anybody that goes down there that we would be doing for people scraping paint?
Attach it to the way, waste yard dump site? You go on to the dump site, you assume all personal liability?
That's a good idea.
Now, somebody just going down there and dumping a bunch of, I suppose, anybody who checks out the key is going to pull off the property and they need to suck the weight, they could all the whole list and they go. Sue us.
Mushroom runners? Mushroom runners?
They're going to just traverse you.
They're going to go where they, they're like bikers, they go where they want. Until they put some ankle and they're hurt.
If they go on city property, we have not granted them, then that's trespass and they can't come after the city. Because we didn't give them permission.
What's the difference between that and the park?
Pardon?
What's the difference between going on there or the park?
Pardon? What's the difference between going on there or the park? Uh, well...
Park isn't signed.
What is that?
Park isn't signed, no trespassing. Right, I think your dump site is, it's restricted, it's Steve Andrea. Park is intended for access.
Except that we're going to, we're getting no trust... Disgulfed.
We assume the liability of people utilizing the park space.
Can you put it down at the bottom after the date of return by signing this? I am accepting all responsibility.
We will, we will get the attorney to approve.
Yeah, it's a, it's a legal thing.
Because you don't want to be practicing law.
Oh, no, not at this stage in my life.
Even though I have done it, and I've practiced being an engineer too.
I play lawyer sometimes.
I also have a citizen that mentioned, uh, simplifying this into a RFID card. Basically a pass card. Said those mag locks are usually an expensive type of card reader. People are incorporating into a custom little box cover for the gate, flash lock, whatever.
That was one of the issues with putting the camera down there was electricity to it.
It was, I mean, there was a cost associated with that, which...
You have to have a mag box.
Forty thousand if we're going to pull the, pull the power in and remove the cameras, so... But I just, I wanted their, their opinion.
So how would that work? We would, uh, issue RFID to anybody who wanted to and they just keep it? Go in and out whenever?
Well, so most of those RFIDs, you can change the pass code. Um, so if I give you...
My room key?
Yep, basically like in a motel, like I give you a key for this many hours and this many days and you don't bring it back, nearly, nearly out the cost of the, the card.
Well, and you can look at, uh, annual card. You issue somebody a card for annual and then they, they pay a fee and they can come and go as they please, but...
But we have, we don't want to charge fees.
And then it registers, but then it registers that that person, that's the card that they have. It shows when that person goes in and out.
But we don't know what they're hauling. Why are we still doing the cameras?
Yeah, yeah.
So there's electricity across the street. I mean, would, would it take to four overs or...
Um, it's, it's pulling, Tony said something like it's pulling off the rodeo grounds or something like that. I don't know if it's actually city power or not. It's something hokey. I don't know.
There's a, there's a line that runs down the road.
Typical Maxwell stuff.
There's a line that runs down the road, power line?
Yes. But pulls off the rodeo grounds or something.
That was what, that was part of that proposal with the, with the camera system and the automated yard locking gate system. Was that they were just going to drop a big pole on both sides running across the road, meeting the requirements for a power line crossing the road, the high requirements. And, um, that, that was expensive. I think the total cost was forty-three, forty-four thousand. I'm sure it's higher now.
Sounds a bit eerie, but...
Took a heck of a lot of two dollar cards.
We try this, what we've got kind of in place and see how it works.
I think that's where we're at, at the moment. Yeah, if we wanted to try and monetize it and pay for a system upgrade, then we can also revisit that at different times as well, but...
If we can only get people to dump the stuff where they're supposed to dump the stuff?
Yes, that's what I saw today. Uh, only, what was it, a hundred fifty feet away?
Yeah, only.
That close.
Yeah.
Aren't there some ladders down there?
I think part of that might be signage. If we put a sign up, this is what I need here. This is what I need here. This is the area. That might help with that.
Little rims and...
Yeah.
Piece of tubing going up and mark your, make your own sign.
I'm sure there's enough left over, no parkings or something can be found that they can make something with, so...
Rock Creek, no, no parking between signs. All the way up on the road, so pull them out.
Is this going to come down soon?
Did we remove that from the ordinance? Did they get put up?
I think we're waiting until we get the other signs to be able to pull the signs down and put another sign up.
How many twenty-fives are you going to put up?
I'm not the guy. I don't, I don't know.
But that's so ambiguous because between signs, yeah. They can come out anytime.
All right. So we'll move on to... I don't think we have any more further action on the yard waste burn sites. We'll move on to discussion action on road repair proposal. Tony provided a proposal of sixty-four thousand thirteen dollars and thirty cents. The budgeted amount was forty-one thousand. We've already spent, I believe it was six thousand of that on, um, dust control.
When, when is this going to be done?
This will be after July.
So it's next fiscal year?
This is next fiscal year.
So it doesn't... And we have...
We've not physically spent the money. We've just...
For dust control?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be out of this fiscal year?
I don't know. I thought it was last because we've already already spent last year's, or this year's, sorry.
Which usually build in July.
Huh?
Usually build in July or August.
Okay, so it would be out of next fiscal year.
Tony had said around thirty-five thousand. So we need to decide what needs cut. Thirty-five thousand kind of fits for me with six thousand being spread out of forty-one thousand budgeted. That leaves thirty-five thousand.
Is this the same company that has done it before?
Yes, yes.
They did a lousy job when we...
I don't know what that means. I mean, it's tar and rock, so it's not really, it's not, there's not a fine process to it.
Do you want to come and look at my, all the gravel from the road that's come into my yard? I mean, they did a lousy job. Just saying.
Yeah, Steelco is, uh, messy. What is the, uh, roads committee suggesting? Or are we just doing this as a group?
Roads committee? Roads committee, is that what that?
I was Joel with...
Joel and me? Well, that's easy.
So...
How much of Rock Creek is going to be messed up with, uh, construction and housing?
That was my initial first thought. Housing starts, can you build out there? Do we want to start fixing roads that aren't going to be in great shape for the housing projects? We have twenty-nine thousand to cut out of this estimate.
Twenty-nine thousand. Nineteen would be Rock Creek.
Yep. I can tell you from my walks around town, I don't usually walk out on, uh, Rock Creek, but I know walking North Street, that road has been neglected for a while. Especially at the intersection of North and Baldwin, it's going to get even more traffic. So I don't know if starting it at Baldwin's a great idea at the moment either. Since we will also have traffic, parking and...
Yeah, I think I'm thinking of doing North and Baldwin.
So I don't know if we can stay away from Baldwin Street.
Is this estimate associated with anything that's going to be torn up?
North Street to Baldwin. This starts at North, at Baldwin Street, goes from Baldwin.
From Maine to Baldwin?
Maine to Baldwin.
Yeah.
That's part of the construction project.
Well, our, our, the construction project will go to the end of return of North Street. So I wouldn't do anything, right, yeah, return one of the intersections. Yeah, just at the intersection. We don't go any further up North Street. Yep. So I think if you went from Maine...
Joel, how's your road?
Well, I, I actually saw Tony driving down, down my road, checking it out. And I sent him a text and told him as long as he picks the pothole in front of my house, I would be happy. And he said he was looking at doing the whole road. I mean, I just know of that one big pothole in front of my place under that. I'm having...
I'm talking to him, there's one huge one.
Uh, that's, they filled that one with gravel because that, I'm not putting any more patch in Baldwin Street's coming up, so...
Right. Well, Metcalf and Fort, the fifth is the same deal. Where the, where the buses are currently parked there, the edge between that and the street is the issue. And that, they've got, so I don't know how much of these there are than maybe just some patching on those spots rather than that whole block as well.
Trotter's just this right here behind Casey's own spot.
First, second. That's our high traffic area where lots of guests and visitors come in. I think that's why there's always a focus on Trotter would be.
Pretty rough.
Well, I suggest we start Rock Creek.
So this also includes... Part of this is cold patch, uh, cold mix patch, which is thirty-six tons. That's fixing a lot of potholes. The square yards is the actual cost of the roads. So it's forty-nine thousand in roads, fifteen, almost fifteen thousand in cold patch.
Does the majority just need potholes, hole films? If there's somebody who can get to fill all of that all through town?
Usually Tony has gotten to take care of the cold patch, so that's just a matter of...
They do that, they do that when they're getting ready to do, because they set it for what they need for the road.
We could do it if we don't have that road done and it has some spots in it.
We could just purchase cold patch and fill holes.
Because there's a lot of them throughout town, not just on these streets.
Yeah. So senior housing drive six fifteen, so here's six fifteen.
Six fifteen is my house, you know, for that.
That's your old house? Okay. And then...
Starts at two-ten and goes to house one thousand.
And the only reason it's broken up into three parts, I think, is because the width is different.
I see.
Yeah, it's wide down.
It's wider, so they're charging us that, for that width and then narrower, which is less...
Yeah.
Square footage.
Should be last sales.
Well, if you do Metcalf, Web Court and Rock Creek, that comes out to be thirty-six thousand dollars. But then you still have a certain amount of cold patch, which, uh, takes, now we're already over thirty-five. North by itself is, uh, what, thirteen and a half thousand dollars?
Well, it's nine thousand, but I think we could stop the Baldwin to Maine piece, take off that four thousand.
I guess, uh, including Trotter, sorry.
Oh, yeah, gotcha.
Yeah.
Trotter and North.
Uh, I would, a lot of people see Trotter. I don't think it's in that bad a shape between first and second. So there's eighty-five hundred.
For Trotter?
Trotter and North, Baldwin to Maine, right?
We don't want to do Baldwin to Maine. At least not now.
Right.
Can make it a priority next year.
And so what are they going to do on, uh, North from Maxwell, uh, through, what, through intersection? Is that through the end of the road? Through, through the intersection.
So it goes to the concrete. I think they're talking about up to, um, I think it's up to...
Where that is on the concrete, yeah.
Where it turns, where there used to be a tiny way around back there, basically up to where it ends. Or is that concrete?
Four hundred feet, I don't know.
Last block is concrete, so they're going to stop at the last block.
That would be Metcalf, Metcalf to the end of the, not Maxwell, but Metcalf to the end of the street would be three hundred feet.
Yeah, that one does make sense.
No, it doesn't.
It's probably Maine through, through...
That'd be six hundred feet.
Maine from the intersection to the concrete is six hundred?
Well, make, from Maine to, Maine to Maxwell would be three hundred feet. Maxwell to Metcalf would be another three hundred feet. And three hundred feet from Metcalf to the end of the street would be another three hundred feet, so...
But that's already concrete.
That's concrete, so they're stopping.
Everything but Sixth Street is concrete. Seventh, eighth.
Oh, to the concrete, to the concrete. Four hundred feet.
I think that's from Main Street.
Wow.
No, that's from Maxwell. If you go, if you start on the west end of Maxwell Street through the intersection to the concrete. That's because that, that section's bad right there. That Maxwell-North intersection is terrible. There's a, around the right-hand curve in between to head east, there, there's a giant hole there. It's crumbling away. It's pulled almost, I would say, four feet into the road.
Look at Fifth and Maxwell on each side of the street. You see kids walking through mud puddles if it rains because there's deep ditches on both sides. Kids walking back and forth and crossing from the school. I don't know if that could just be patched or if it needs to be changed.
That would probably be fourteen tons itself to level that.
Ten feet or four.
Those are, those are deep holes that takes all the runoff from that North block.
Yeah. It's a mess.
Well, whatever it is, it's five thousand dollars. And we don't know how much cold mix each one of these is going to take.
I would say North was probably the bigger selection of that because at the North and Baldwin interchange, there is probably eighteen inches of height difference between the edge and the center of the road.
Can, uh... Joel, you think that Web Court is more of a cold patch job?
No, that's the only hole that I've seen on, on that road is right there.
So it might be, might be able to last another year?
It's, I mean, it's kind of like, where the hole is, it's on the edge. And so it kind of like, it's starting to, it's washing.
Yeah.
Washing down in.
So we might be able to use cold patch from that one.
Are you talking about where they tried to repair a water line there?
I don't know where it is there. It's right, it's right there on the edge of the road.
We can look at it and if we can fix it.
When I pop it out of the ditch with the mower, you know, a mower hits the bottom of that.
I'm guessing, I'm pretty sure that's what Tony said, that they repaired a water line for the people that live on the west side of the road. If we can fix it, we'll try and fix it.
I think that we should try to do all of Rock Creek. Uh, we don't want it to get ahead of us, uh, with failures, particularly with additional traffic going to be going that way.
Very likely with redetour.
And I have absolutely no idea whether that subdivision's going to be done or not, how many times we get at that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So there's, uh, ten, thirteen, nineteen, five for those three lines. So there's, uh, ten, thirteen, nineteen, five for those three lines. And, uh, five thousand for North. And.
If you guys, just one more piece, if you wanna save back some of this in case we do have to have some additional costs with, um, best control of the county, shared expenses for detour. That's up to you guys to decide that as well, if we want to pay for that.
Well, just those four pieces, the three pieces of Rock Creek and, uh, North Street. Uh, comes out to thirty-four thousand five hundred. And so that leaves ten thousand dollars where we have no idea how much of that cold patch is going to be needed. So, uh, we already may be at thirty-five thousand dollars with just those pieces.
Which ones are you talking about, Steve?
The three Rock Creek and the North Street Maxwell through the intersection. We do those four. That makes twenty-four, then we're, we're twenty-four thousand and plus some cold patch.
Bus sound coverage allowed for the cold patch.
And we have. Okay, I see. So we might be pretty close to thirty-five thousand.
If they leave extra cold patch, we can fix those holes.
And Web Court, do some cold patch on this to see if we can get it by another year. Uh, Metcalf by, uh, from Third to Fifth. Is that? Is that gonna last another year, Doug?
We need to do some, something there with the puddles between the road and the parking.
Is it the parking or is it the road though?
The road itself is good.
Who's responsible for which?
Well, we are responsible for everything from sidewalk to sidewalk.
So it's basically sidewalk to edge of road that's bad.
Sidewalk to edge of road.
A travel portion of the road that.
Where we did the trees or further north?
Further north, up there by the old kitchen.
Yeah, by the old kitchen. That's a pretty bad spot where they park buses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's long holes. The school created their own problem there by going in and putting an overlay on that road, which made the, so made, so the water could not get to the ice. And they just did it without approval of the city. They just went in there and put the overlay on it. So there are puddles and they're. They're caused by the city. They're by the school.
And then the city's responsible because it's between the sidewalks, right?
Well.
There's no sidewalk on the other side.
Going out, no, uh, a week after it rained, I see no puddles. So.
So is that a motion, Steve, to do those four sections to have Scott sign those?
Three and a half.
Or Tony, either one.
Oh, no.
Yes, I move that we do the North, North Street, Maxwell through the intersection and the three Rock Creek listed. Uh, and whatever cold patch is needed for those projects. Second.
Further discussion on those sections apparently, or redway. Joel?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Does?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Can you share that, please, Deb, with Tony for me? Thank you. Council Mayor reports, Steve.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Sue?
Nothing in particular other than what I've already expressed.
Thank you. Joel?
Oh, boy, here we go.
Oh, shit. I won't feel so bad then.
All right, so, um, were we gonna talk at all about the speed sign thing that you sent out?
That's on my list.
Good time to talk about it. Um, there's a grant opportunity available through the DOT. Grant funding is available starting soon. If you guys want me to fill out a grant application, I just kinda wanted to, wanted to throw it out there and see if there's any interest. If you guys don't want it.
Well, I mean, reading that, I mean, obviously it's not gonna be a revenue generator like some of these.
To clarify what it is, it is nothing more than an identifying.
Reminder.
How fast you're traveling and when you reach a certain speed, which I believe is six miles an hour over the posted speed limit, flash, it flashes slow down.
Yep, and, and it's programmable. Um, the stalker one that was listed there, um, that's what we use up in the state center. I've already got the app already on my phone and everything. Um, it's programmable. Um, you can set it to whatever speed limits wherever, wherever it's at. The batteries, I'm guessing, I'm guessing we'd have ours, you know, wired into the, to the.
Wasn't it solar?
Or solar, was it solar?
Yeah, I think there's either one.
Oh, all right.
Part of the grant issue or the concern for it is the grant, of course, uh, provides upfront costs. We are therefore been responsible due to the grant for upkeep and maintenance and maintaining this, I believe it's five, five years?
Yeah, I think after five years, then we take over.
Warranty was five years.
Warranty was five, and we were responsible to keep it operational for fifty, something along those lines.
Yeah, that kind of stuff.
And then we're, we get, since we have a state highway that runs through, we get two of them, you know, one going each way.
Yep.
Um, and I mean, the, the maintenance cost is gonna be minimal, I believe. If, even if it is solar, we'll have to replace the batteries every, every few years. That, that'll be the biggest cost, but I think it does, it does keep track of, it shows your, your periods of when you have cars going fast, so it would allow us to.
Provide data.
Provide data to the county sheriff to say, hey, we want traffic control during this time. Um, to, to maybe cut down some of the speeders, so. Yeah, I, I would recommend that we go ahead and do it with the minimal cost and the benefit. I mean, I don't know if we need to put that on, on next agenda to.
I think I can fill out an application for, for the grant and then we would have the opportunity to accept and deny, so then we can make that at that point.
Okay.
Make council.
Okay.
And this would be two signs?
Uh. The way I'm reading it, because we have a state highway that goes through.
It's only state highway.
One going into town right next to where the trail is gonna go up that hill.
Yep, right where the twenty-five sign is, and then from the east, I think the bottom of the hill where it's thirty-five.
Oh, that, did any, I mean, has anybody checked on the, with the DOT? Can we lower the speed limit coming into town?
That's already happening. They were already controlling the speed coming in because of the crossing, from what I understood.
So it would go to stay the twenty-five and it would go back around the curve prior to Dollar General? Because now it's at forty coming in and then twenty-five.
I know we had talked about asking the DOT to move that twenty-five mile an hour sign further down the road. I haven't heard anything.
I saw something in the county proposal that they had already had communications with.
Yeah, I think we talked about that. I asked that question once. I think they said that they were going to. I, I raised it when I went up to, uh, a trail meeting a couple of times. Saying that, that trail crossing is, would be dangerous because people are still going thirty-five, forty miles an hour at that spot. Even though the sign there says twenty-five.
That doesn't happen until about three blocks later.
But if there, if that has been brought up and they're working on it, great. If they haven't, then we need to, uh, be.
I think I would get.
I believe I did say something to them one time about it and they said it was supposed to be part of their deal.
With the DOT and the whole trail, I know we said it should have more clout without just being us alone.
They're the ones crossing the city, turning around the city without State Highway.
Even going from the bridge should be a lower speed coming around curves.
Well, that'll be the DOT to, to figure that out, though.
They, they have a standard distance between, as they go from fifty-five down to forty-five to thirty-five to twenty-five.
Yeah, well, that doesn't happen around.
No.
It doesn't. Forty down to twenty-five.
But there's something else to.
We can put it at five, you're still gonna have people flying around that corner. I mean, that, that, that's the problem, I mean. Without having an enforcement capability.
So here's where I'm at with it. The trail will begin this year. If the DOT does it and we as a council wanted to reach out, have Snyder's Associates communicate with DOT or ourselves, communicate with DOT in regards to moving the traffic signals back or changing it due to safety, we can obviously make those recommendations and make those phone calls. I don't, I really don't, it's not that we're gonna settle here, right here, right now, because we don't know what, what the whole case and project.
Well, when we did the east into town, I know we got things moved out, basically three hundred yards on each one of those signs. That was a two-year process because you had to do, uh, the speed bump thing or not speed bump, the.
The traffic study, the, the, you know, the wire cables to figure where.
It took two years to get that done and it cost us several thousand dollars by the time it was all done. So if DOT will do it on our behalf and keep our billfold closed on this one, that would be great. Cause wherever we get this, if we do, where we put the twenty-five is, it would probably be the logical place to put that warning sign that, you know, hey, wake up.
Well, and there again, I think, I think on that, on the paperwork, I think they determine where.
Yeah.
Where to put the, the signs. I don't think we have any choice on where they put it.
No, because it's a state highway.
Yep.
Yeah.
And ninety-nine percent of the time out of the ones I've seen, because I've seen them in several communities, they're on a state highway, they're on the twenty-five mile an hour sign coming into a residential district. And in our case, they're gonna move that out.
I'd like to see that on a forty-five mile an hour.
I, I don't, I don't think they're gonna keep it forty miles an hour crossing the bike trail. I just, I don't. I think they're gonna back that up. There's only two places I have anywhere where the bike trail doesn't have a speed change and that's down by Bingo and then down by Landere. But those aren't part of our trails either, so.
But over by Madre, the bike trail crosses D-ten over there, just out on the side of Madre. And it also crosses in Slater.
Yep, crosses in Valeria, yeah, there's a chocolate trail there and there's a big flood on there at that little river town. Yep, the difference of, I was gonna say on the, the study we did years ago is, one of the things that would be a little bit different is on that one, we were looking to ask them to add some controls, like a stop sign or something there. And so they wanted to see proof that the traffic, um, counts justified it. On this one, I think it should be a little bit easier because it's a trail crossing, right? It's, it's a new access and with the, the emphasis on, on trail on track and pedestrian and, and bike transportation, I think hopefully it's, it's just a, hey, we have this now, please review and then they, they would do all that work. I don't, I don't wanna do it if we don't have to.
Spencer should know whether or not they're moving those.
And I've got a note here to follow up with Spencer, so I'll, I'll follow up on mine with Spencer and see, and if nothing else, it's an application with the DOT that says, hey, we're adding this. You might wanna look at your, your speed control and I think they're gonna be pretty responsive because bike's a big thing now, right? So.
Well.
Bike safety is a big thing.
It's coming into your residential business district differently on a state highway.
Things have changed. You got Dollar General out there now, so I think it's worth, it, it should be not us asking them, hey, we wanna change this. It's, things have changed here. You need to reevaluate and hopefully get it reversed. It might take two years, but.
Signs on the twenty-five mile an hour sign and they move that twenty-five mile an hour sign, what a thing that is.
Yeah, go with it.
But visibility, if you're coming around that curve, people who aren't familiar with the area may not see that there's bike trail right there unless they lower the speed.
Yep, and that's why they put stop signs on the bike trail.
Yeah.
They'll be putting a trail crossing sign on it, just like they have at the other.
They will have them bike tr- bike crossing.
Yeah.
It'll be marked. We'll, I'm guessing it'll have some yellow paint or something across it too, so. All right, I will, I'll work on that application.
Um, another thing, so we were talking about the cars that are painting the street out here. Um, what are the possibilities of looking at cameras in the, the city streets?
Um, city streets, probably not an issue at all.
Is.
Let's see the state.
Cause one, it's, one, it's, well, but I mean, even if we, if we had one to watch the front of the city hall, the library, the fire station. It just happens to catch that, security, yep, security, safety, security. You know, we could, we could look at doing, uh, I don't think you could use community betterment money to, to put cameras in to make it a safer, more secure city. Um, that we can have cameras facing both ways.
So the proposal I had for one camera to stare at our bathroom down here was nine thousand dollars. Can we do it better than that? It's expensive. Yes, can we go to Menards and buy our own?
Yep.
Who's gonna set it?
Well.
I can hire somebody or I can do it or.
I have no problem with, uh.
If we wanna do something like that.
Doing a nine thousand dollar camera, uh, that, uh, would, uh, capture, uh, activity because we won't have to worry about auctions getting broken into anymore, but, uh, there are other businesses.
I know, in San Diego, we've got them uptown where you see the post office, we've actually got one in the post office. You can see the city hall front and back. You know, and, and it's helped on several cases where something happens, then we just pull up that camera footage. We can review it and see who's at fault.
It'll also get substantially easier with our new internet provider than what we can.
And I just think putting them, putting them out here in the, in the business district, um, will help.
Which may also assist with our bathroom up, up the park.
Yes.
Cause that might just be something why.
So, I mean, I, I would be willing to research, you know, having some companies even come in and give quotes and find out.
Like you said, even at Menards, the swan system, which is even wired, you can get non-wired, but even for like this section, you'd be able to wire and you'd see the backside of the library here. Plus just put two cameras up.
And nobody has to sit and monitor it. It's just a, if something happened.
Hard drive, it's just a hard drive and you can come back.
Right. So there's something for, for public safety there. Um, I have on here the grocery store, um, with them closing down now. Are we looking at doing anything with community or economic development to try and?
Yeah.
Since we lost Casey's and we lost grocery store now.
Had a conversation with Greg this week, um, not really anywhere at the moment, but it's in the consideration. Uh, I went over and talked to Jay and Tom this morning. Um, I thank them for their sixty-four years of community betterment because that's what they've done. Um, been staples to the community, provided countless dollars to all the different activities that have taken place in town. Something hopefully will happen, um, whether, it might be a consideration that the city might need to be start thinking about that we might wanna be purchasing one of the last few buildings that are on Main Street that can be a commercial business. Really wanna. Cause right now, most of Main Street is filled up with apartments and apartments don't help economic development, especially if we are building homes. And at some point, business needs to come somewhere and right now it's not on Main Street. So if we can consider how we're gonna continue to manage. Allowing business opportunities on our main street, maybe consider every resource, so it's a. Um, takeover in Brownfield of the building because it's a hundred and fifty-four years old.
Eighteen eighty-one.
So, um. And and talking with the uh with Jay and Tom, there's no way a restaurant or a. We're precious, don't go back in there today and meet.
Or a restaurant.
Or a restaurant or any.
Well, that's the problem. Anything that takes over in there, even an office. If there comes an office building, it has to come up to correct codes.
Yep, right.
And it's gonna be tough.
It it will be, especially on a building that is that age and size, so.
Is there anything on like historical that that we can?
Yes.
Preserve that building?
You can always historically preserve it, but then you take on all of the responsibility and cost of maintaining and ownership because we have to. We most likely have to take possession in order to get that done. Um, there's all the, also the alternative of taking ownership and possession of the building if the city wants to try and do that. There's grant funding for brownfield restoration, which is removal of asbestos, removal of uh. Because I know they're gonna have all of it. Um, which. Having a building that we can then return to the uh a buyer. That has some of that work done is part of that economic development grant process. So, um, just some things for the council to consider. Um. I'm not trying to push anything at the moment, just simply because it's still fresh in everybody's mind and uh I don't wanna. I don't wanna upset the apple cart at the moment.
I'd be happy to go to any of the wholesalers. Deal with most of them.
And then uh. I got a email back from the art teacher at Collins Maxwell. She's got several. Uh. Logos for us to look at right now. She's got a few more that'll be ready next week, so. Some of them are off of Canva, which is, they use like pictures that are already on Canva and it's authorized for.
Yeah.
For commercial uses.
Right.
So, um, that she she'll get those to me, so we'll be looking at some some logos here pretty soon.
Good.
Um. And then. Deb, who who does the streetlights out there at Web Court?
Soon as.
Okay. Because they replaced, they replaced both the lights, north and south, several times and they keep going out. I don't know what. We need to do to get them to.
Explains why they're built, so she appreciate that. Cheapest one in town.
It actually went down.
Yeah, see? The lights out, cheapest one.
Keep them on out. But, I mean, at least now the north one is completely out instead of coming on and off all night long. Um, but yeah, they're they're both out now. Um, again.
How are they the LED ones?
I believe they put LED on the south light last time. I think the north one is still.
And the south one is out also now or?
Yep. And they replaced that one the last time.
Deb, are you gonna reach out for them?
Yeah, we can talk to them.
Thank you. If you.
I just called them for one. I were on Meyer Street.
If there are any issues or something, I'll I'll reach out.
I mean, I'm not scared of the dark, but I just figured, you know.
We.
We got lights out there, might as well light them up.
Expect them lights on.
You need to have light at every intersection at.
Speaking of which, I kind of not heard back from Lion. Other than the last time that I did talk to him, this is in regards to the, I think it's Ashford and. Second. Um. They told me it was gonna cost a lot. And that's kinda where they never got back a hold of it. There's no power there, so then they have to run a new pole, new line, and a new pole, uh new light pole. And of course, that becomes a city's responsibility because they don't really care if lights are there or not. So, I'll reach out again because we discussed that last council.
I've seen street lights. Uh, that have uh a solar collector on them. And uh. I don't know if that's would be a possibility down there or not, rather than, you know, running electricity to it.
Just have to have a pole.
We still have to have the pole. We still have to have the light. Uh, and then at. Up above, they have a panel that looks like it's uh, oh, three foot.
I've got one at home that runs off solar. I put them back towards my. Anyway. It sits there and then at at night it's at one level and if you walk towards it, it actually brightens up. But they uh they make, and it's a pretty good size.
I don't think there's anything stopping the city from doing a pole. So, we just need to figure out how we're gonna pay for it. We'd have to do that either way, whether we. We have a lion put in their pole and they pay for, we pay for the wire. Basically, that's what I think he said is we were gonna have to pay for the wire. They would put the light, pay for the light, the pole, we would pay for the wire, which is still expensive. But uh. Or we just drop our own pole and put a light up and and assume responsibility for it. Because at least then we don't have a lot that costs.
And the last thing I have, um, I attended a meeting uh Story County earlier this week. Um, essential service work group for making EMS an essential service and. It it was basically. Haida County, I think it was Haida County, brought it in. Um, they were not expecting that big of a turnout. They were only expecting twenty people. We had seventy. Um. But it's a bunch of counties trying to figure out how to go about making EMS essential service. Um, and so. Story County hosted it, so I'm hoping that that means that they're looking at. Putting it on a ballot one of these days to make EMS essential. Story County.
And if that were to happen, what does that mean?
Um, so there there would be another tax levy that could come out of it. Um, right now, it's no more than a dollar per thousand. Um, but it would be. The county would be assessing that. Um, but then. That's where, that's where some of the counties are doing it different where um they're shoving that money down to the small first responder departments. But some of them are making it, that money goes to um hire more full-time. At like Story County Medical would have more people. So then they could have another ambulance ready to go at any time or. So it it all depends on how the board of supervisors. Wanna spend that money. So.
So if they decide their essential service is everything comes out of the beta. Then we're just out.
Then we're out.
We still.
Except that they may add an ambulance and maybe we wouldn't even. Uh, and they would locate the ambulance in a different location, so we may not even need to have the EMS.
They could look at, they could look at putting an ambulance down. But, you know, down on each corner of the county or whatever, whatever they they bring in for taxation, um, they could put that towards. Towards buying equipment, buying, paying wages. Um, it it's all, it all depends on how. How they do it, more supervisors. But it could filter down to where. You know, they they give us a little bit extra. We'll cover what we do to pay for our supplies or whatever. Um. So.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
And that, one of the other, so they also could put like a fly car so that then um. It doesn't help us right now, but if we had an ambulance that we did our transports, then they would just send a paramedic down to to jump on our rig. To transport, so that's that's a possibility too, but like I said, with us not having an ambulance now. It's gonna help.
Thank you, Joe.
I only have one thing.
Woo.
Last Friday, I'm usually the one that loads up. Last Friday, RT TA, Deb, you remember what those initials stand for? We had a meeting last December, talked about the water problems in town was the topic. They are gonna have a written report in two weeks. They went through each city set up an hour's time slot. They said Cambridge missed their slot and they were gonna reschedule next week, so we had our hour time slot. I only called and I didn't have a video, but they're gonna get back with me sometime and. And email me the videos or the slides so I we can talk about things, but. The reporter's gonna cover some recommendations on how to help us with our water issues. And one thing they were gonna get ahold of, I think they said Spencer, Wes, to talk about. Cause I told them Woodlawn was a topic that we've been working on for a couple of years. Do you remember how big that tube is? That was one thing they were gonna check with Spencer. If we did bury a tube on the west side.
Uh, for the Woodlawn project?
Yes, you.
Uh. It's either twenty-four or thirty inch. I think it it might increase in size or it might stay twenty-four.
Well, they were gonna check with Spencer or or somebody to get that number. And I told them I thought thirty, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think thirty on the max. I think we um, as we've gone through design, we've been able to neck it down, I think, to keep it twenty-four the whole way, because we got like the last little bit was thirty. But we did some things to to keep it twenty-four.
Kind of relayed to them what we had, the fact that the football field is new and created some different dynamics that they've got retention on there. And one of their comments was, well, then when the water comes around the corner from the north side of the football field comes down on the east side, it ends up in that retention pond. I said, well. Physically, no.
No.
Because it's five or six foot higher.
Yeah, the ditch is maintained, the detention base.
But they did say they thought looking at current pictures and old pictures, that the ditch may need some digging out deeper because they thought it was much less. So they had some good thoughts.
Yeah.
They were talking about the uh. Addition out there, Scott Oaks addition, uh and eventually if that north side gets developed, the bowl up there. So they're in tune with some of our issues, which I thought was was very good. They kinda talked, and this is why I was posing more information about. Fifth Street, straight west, we keep it on our property. Yes, it may take a little more work now, but we would never have any liability to a property owner. If if we did that, so they had some good thoughts, good ideas. We spent better part of an hour talking about things. Uh, the biggest problem, they said, Maxwell is flat. And it just doesn't have enough slope to do much of anything, but we had a good discussion. Again, there's gonna be a written report in a couple of weeks. Lauren was the person that took charge of the thing, but FEMA was there, DNR was there. And uh, again, I didn't have pictures to look at, but I. I was, they were telling me where they were talking and we we talked about different things, so that was a good meeting, so more to come on that.
You know, the uh visioning group also has a component about uh trying to figure out uh drainage. Uh, water and all those things, uh, so that we need to.
Probably need to share that file because it's all.
Once we get it, yeah.
Well, it's on the vision, so.
Oh, it's in there? Okay, okay.
We need to share with the, was it? I forget what it's named, but I forget what those visions stand for too. But yeah, they've already done the um. Stormwater, then it wasn't stormwater, it was uh. Wetland. Study.
Darryl Rockfield was the person who was in charge of coordinating all this.
Have his contact?
This guy, I'll give it to you.
Give it to me and I'll send it with a copy of that.
Okay.
Wetland study. Because basically what vision committee looked at was the waterways from uh north of town. Uh, a mile coming in with converging uh communities, so um they looked at the watershed in that area.
Okay.
And how to manage that with transportation, so. Just rewriting the wheel. Thank you for Steve for bringing it up.
That's all.
Thank you, Deb. Ken?
I just wanna say that I'm pretty disappointed in the trail being taken out all those trees. That, in my opinion, doesn't request your guys' opinion. That's what I just wanna say.
All those trees being the three trees by the sign?
Yeah.
I don't know what we can do about it.
I really hope none of the logos come back with three pine trees on them. Yeah, strike that one out of there.
Yeah.
How many, how many places in the picture of those three pine trees that sign.
Oh, yeah.
Utilized to represent what our town.
I mean, with people coming into town, that's what we see. I mean, we've.
Number one, yeah.
And we've lit them up last couple of years for different things, Fourth of July, Christmas, whatever. And uh, that was. Part of our donation for our family and daughter and my father-in-law would be able to show those, so. I'm just. Pretty disappointed in that situation, the whole. I had that whole deal coming from the prick. This way, I'm a rural bit anyway.
I don't think there's anybody here that's not sharing.
Yeah.
The discussion or the thought process on what. Actually transpired versus what we were envisioning as a council and mayor, what we originally wanted and intended and hoped for. And the things that we were going to do as a city to accommodate that, the amount of money that we were looking at spending to. Keep it running through our community, um, the way that we had originally been told when it was coming. The amount of money they spent to bring to bring that switchback in to begin with. Uh, is now wasted funds for their purposes, but. You know, as Steve proposed, we now have an opportunity for creating that as our own. And maybe we wind up with something that um becomes our own again and is now the new focus point of our community coming into town. Um, not to take away from what's already been done. Um, but certainly we can reuse those lights on those new trees or whatever I'm trying to do.
I'm just. It's just that that's kind of an iconic thing coming into town.
It is.
Has been for, those trees have been there for, I don't know how old they are, but I know they're pretty oversized.
Wes, can you let Spencer know that those lights are there, that we can maintain those, not destroy?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll have, I'll have some more conversation with him on the whole topic, if you know what I mean, just.
Okay. I wonder where the electricity comes from for those lights.
That's a good question. I guess there's a drop out there somewhere.
I don't.
So he mentioned some uh. The owners of which would be Plumpets.
Plumpets.
Right.
Not getting permission or did we ask?
No, he said that they didn't have time. To talk to Plumpets because the county is ramming this project through because they are using their.
Some.
Art funds. To do this project. And so they didn't take time to talk to Plumpets.
Didn't take time.
Because it would have slowed things down. Also, you move the thing further north and that means both sides have to be moved further north. Uh. And if we avoid, which may mean that we could avoid the trees, but uh it may also mean that you can't simply because. That you just can't move it any further north. I don't know. Is, would it be worth looking at?
I looked at the cross, crossway or crossroads there being. Just instead of straight, it's just a diagonal. To get to that point, you know.
Would it be the first diagonal crossing of the bike path?
No, I mean.
I mean, would it have been to have another focal point as an overpass? It's fantastic if you want on poor labor and aging.
Any idea, any idea what that costs?
Oh, I know.
It's a safety issue too, where they've got it now. Right on the curbs coming in.
Yeah, I mean, I just, just didn't.
It's. Lot of different.
Safety wise too. There's a bigger, bigger concern of mine than.
Yeah.
But.
Anything else?
You know, I think there's a couple of those bridges like that, sitting in a field. In Ames.
Yeah.
That are sitting there doing nothing. I'm in the middle of this guy's field, there's two or three of them. In fact, there used to be a little steel one, which is steel back there too.
They're off a thirty?
Yeah, and you go along Dayton and then you toward, you turn towards the mark.
I've never seen those.
I'm done.
I do not have anything other than what I've already just addressed and discussed. Nope. Um. It's such a general agenda. Um, April first has no Ken.
Okay. Move approval of the uh. Uh, April agenda or April minutes?
April first or April second?
A, which one are you not on?
April first.
Move approval of April first minute.
Second?
No.
Further discussion?
Is it? Yeah. Um, it says the note about the next meeting. Um, it says the note about the next meeting should be, and it's got April, and it should be May.
Next meeting will be March sixth, and should be May sixth.
No, that's right.
September, March sixth.
Yeah, March.
March, can you make that change, Deb?
Yeah.
Okay. New motion for a change? Or actually have to vote on the first?
No.
No?
We'll just move that the, uh, minutes be corrected as requested.
Further discussion? Doug?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Ken?
Ken, vote.
In this regard, Sue?
Yes.
Steve? I said that. All right, uh, April second is, um, no Sue, no Joel.
We know about it.
Move approval the April second?
Second.
Further discussion? Ken?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
The third one has no. No Steve.
No Steve.
I move seven minutes for April first, or April third, I'm sorry.
I'll second, but make a notation on second page, seven G, the last line, final plans for the IDOT with, it has bid five twenty-one bid letting, so we need to cross off that first word, bid. With bid letting, with five twenty-one bid letting. Bid's in there twice, unless I'm misreading it.
Final plans to IDOT with bid five twenty-one bid letting.
I think it should just say with five twenty-one bid letting.
Take the first one.
Take the first bid out.
Which one is it? Sorry, what was I saying?
Right ahead of five twenty-one twenty-four, cross off bid.
Seven G.
Seven G.
Okay, okay. Okay.
So, I second that correction.
Any further discussion?
On six F, it's not the shelter, it's the church stand. Said received a grant from Diamond Vogels for the six gallons of paint for the park shelter.
It's park shelter, depending on who you're talking to.
It's better than Dogg, yeah.
Oh, okay, it's church, I didn't figure it was shelter.
The ordinance calls it the, uh, uh, shelter, park shelter.
Oh, okay.
Separation of church and state.
In this case, separation of church and shelter.
Yes.
The next meeting.
Second.
Further discussion?
Next meeting will be, uh, I can't, I can't write down where it was, next meeting, April third, it should be May first.
Does it say next meeting?
Yeah, very, after, after all the.
All right, all right.
Financials.
Yep. May first.
All right. Any further? Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Sue?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries.
Move approval of the current bills.
Sorry.
Further discussion? Sue?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Ken? Yeah.
Doug?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Make a motion.
Wait, 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 wait. Who, I'm trying to write here, and you guys are, who, who moved and who seconded it and who?
I second.
You seconded it?
Steve moved.
Okay. And there's five lights, right?
Yes.
Okay. Steve, what now?
We're gonna be able to get out of here. I don't believe there was a motion.
Yes, I will.
Sue moved.
This is an official meeting.
Further discussion? Joel?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Doug?
Yeah.
Steve?
No.
Uh-oh.
All right, you stay here.
I said no.
I said no.
Okay, so the next meeting is on fourteen?
Yes.
And I will expect to see that now in a minute.